Here.
Alderman, Alderman-elect McDermott?
Here.
Alderwoman-elect Joseph?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right, and next, Ms. Williams, our police chaplain is going to lead us into this occasion.
Good afternoon. If you would gather your mind and your heart and listen to these words of prayer. As we meet this evening, let us be thankful for the public servants among us. Let us bless the newest community leaders. That as they serve their term, they will be healthy, they will obtain knowledge, they will serve with wisdom when necessary, and be alert to the needs of this community. Always being fully aware of justice and peace to be administrated under their tenure of care. Almighty Provider, give this community of Jamaica Beach, its residences and businesses, a safe and prosperous weekend as we remember, acknowledge, and celebrate the persons among us who have served our country and given their lives for freedom. God bless us and God bless America. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. Okay, we have no public comments. Mr. Treyham?
I'm here.
You're up.
Hello, council. First off, I want to thank you guys that did serve, the outgoing guys. Appreciate what y'all have done for our community, who were willing to do it. And thank you guys for coming in. I think I noted on there when my first comment was, I wanted to talk about the Homestead exemption. Whoever thought of that, thank you. Three years I've been talking to people about this and I keep getting a, but it's already there. But a crank is not, so thank you for coming up with that. I am in favor of that. The other thing I noted on there was the, I thought there was something there about beach replenishment program. And I don't know where the money's coming for, from, for that. But if it's from us, I think we needn't think about that hard. One of the beach replenishment programs they did in Galveston, within two months after they dumped all that sand on there, it was gone. The storm washed it away right away, you know, so it's a gamble. Do we want to take that gamble if it's our money? If it's the state's money, pour it out there.
Okay, we have no special presentations tonight?
We have one more.
Oh, sorry. Yes, we have a, we have a call-in, a write-in. Sorry.
From Larry Vental, 16630 Nassau Way. Regarding the beach fee idea, I urge all of you to take a step back and look at comprehensive plan for reducing seasonal overcrowding on the beach and not just focus on a beach fee. Just asking, are you in favor of a beach fee? It's too simplistic and is as misleading as are you in favor of capping STRs? It doesn't address the downside. A comprehensive plan includes not just restrictions, amenities, and signage, but also how we present our beach to prospective visitors. Do we want to encourage more visitors to Jamaica Beach? Or in contrast, possibly spend money to tap the advantages of going to other beaches? This is a good time to pause and solicit ideas and consider restrictions that heretofore have not been considered nor addressed with the GLO, as far as I can tell. It also means finding out from the folks what the consensus vision is, and consequently, what ideas are compatible with that roadmap. As for a beach fee, the answer is it depends. It depends on where and when, of course, but also what amenities are planned and anticipating unintended consequences. As a reminder, the community doesn't want bathrooms on our beach. And yet, I like the idea of a fee broadcast to the prospective visitors, perhaps encouraging them to go elsewhere. Is the fee strategy even valid? It's possible that the assumption that a fee will discourage a crowded beach's faults and we have more visitors to that section because of the amenities. We also need to consider how success is measured, and if the idea is considered a failure, will it cost money to rescind the investments, such as removing structures and the concrete foundations? My prior statement about the GLO brings up another goal of better documenting the rationale for decisions made in meetings, so that in subsequent meetings, years later with new folks in charge, they can better understand the issues. Knowing the wording of the questions that were asked of the GLO is important as just stating what they said third-hand. With scrutiny of the Q and A, we'll know if the GLO needs a session to follow-up questions. Finally, before you implement any plan, measure the beach traffic this season so that after implementation, we can tell objectively if it works and how much. P.S., believe it or not, I'm in favor of a deterrence-style beach fee with no bathroom amenities as part of a comprehensive plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have no special presentations, and next on the agenda are announcements. We have a Memorial Day celebration this Saturday, May 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I know staff and volunteers have a great event planned. If you haven't signed up your cornhole team yet, please do so and come out. I know it was a great event last year and they expect it to be bigger and better this year. Reminder that City Hall will be closed on Monday and observe the Memorial Day. And then, we also have a summer kickoff concert planned for Thursday, June 6th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the City Park. I, I hope all of you can make it. It'll be a great event. And then on Saturday, June 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., it's our annual hurricane preparedness meeting. We do this in concert with the West Galveston Island Property Owners Association, formerly known as WIGPOA. So they're planning a great ceremony. It, it really is beneficial for you to come out and hear what the latest predictions are and plans are, and also to hear what Galveston is planning to do and how we align with that. Also, one other comment. Bingo. Last Friday night, I wasn't able to attend, but I hear it was a great success and well-attended. Once again, thank you for all who participated. And, and thanks city staff once again for putting on a fabulous event.
Good job, dear.
Our, our, our event queen. Okay, next on our courts from directors. Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, to piggyback on the hurricane preparedness, I'd like to encourage everyone, if you have not already done so, to sign up for Blackboard, our emergency notification system. You can go to the city website and there's the ability to sign up there to receive either a voice call, a text, or an email with our emergency notifications. And we really want to really push that through the, now, especially for hurricane notifications, those types of emergencies. They released the, the forecast today for hurricanes and I think we're at record-setting, they're expecting record-setting number of storms, so that's not, that's not very encouraging. But yeah, don't say that very quietly. So just to let everyone know, the lift station rehabilitation project has begun. Bridge construction is working on lift station number two. That's the, that's the largest station and requires probably the, the greatest amount of work. But that, that did begin this week. I got an update from them. They're, they're preparing to, they're preparing the, the lining of the, of the, of the station of the walls because we had a tremendous amount of leak each. So that is moving forward. Also, just since the sales tax did pass successfully, just to let everyone know that the 1% increase will take effect October 1st. So just be mindful of that. And then, the beach dumpsters, I think, I think I was told that one got removed today and they have, but they, Amerowaste will be picking up the second one. We have a new plan in place for the beach trash, so we'll get the unsately dumpsters off the beach. Other than that, I would stand for questions.
I have one, please. Are you reaching out to our, our merchants to let them know that it's going to be taken back on October 1st?
That, I'm not. The, the state handles that. I've been notified. The state takes care of the notifications.
Oh, marvelous. Okay. Okay. Chief Garibay, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
He's eating cake.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have anything to add to your attached report, Chief?
It's all there. I've been trying my best to keep you posted on everything. I can't get them all right, but we're trying. It's been a busy few weeks since spring break. But y'all have asked for a little bit more detail. I'm not going to give you everything, you know, some of that stuff is kind of personal, but I'm giving you more and more so you know what's going on. And I still communicate with the mayor as far as STR issues. I don't single anybody out. It's what she's asked for. That's a separate report that comes to her. We have it documented. But again, we're here for you guys. I want to thank Kendall and the mayor for approving adding an extra officer on weekends. So as of two weeks, no, three weeks ago, we've added an extra officer on Friday and Saturday. And Kendall said if we anticipate like Memorial Day weekend coming up, we're adding an extra officer on Sunday. So on Friday, Saturday, for, until the summer's over with, we have two officers on duty to help, you know, whatever your needs are here in the community. So again, we thank y'all for the support. Thank you.
We can wait and vote on the order for the weekend?
We're working on that too. Yes, sir. I know, I know you want that pretty boat out there. We're going to get it.
We'll get that pretty boat out there. We'll see it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Keter, do you?
Just one addition. Our mosquito trucks are going to be rolling. I pick up the strut to farther Tuesday or Wednesday. He's getting with the person, with the PO. However, they work it, they contracted with a mechanic. And it'll be ready to roll for the summer.
Okay, and is our contract to actually spray it? Because I know it doesn't be a certified person.
We look at two different options. Yeah, we'll probably go with having Spicer do it.
Okay.
But we, we also get a, a staff person to get licensed to do it, through the process. And we're looking for a term, yeah, we're looking to get terms and code.
I have had a request to make sure that we, we follow proper protocol when we spray because spraying at certain hours can, can kill the bees and, and different bugs. That there's an optimum time. So if we could make sure we pay attention to that too, when we start spraying. I know the county follows that protocol and they can, but we need to make sure we stay tuned to it too.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, and nothing from the fire chief at this time? Okay, next is consent agenda and approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting on April 25th, 2024? And approval of minutes from the special city council meeting on May 14th, 2024? Do I have a motion to, I'll make that motion. Okay, do a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor of approval of the minutes as stated?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. All right, thank you. Okay, next is comments and reports from members of council. Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that I neglected to share with you the notes from the STR task force.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And so that's the, that's the copy of, and that's eight, everyone. Galveston's task force is comprised of two Galveston city council members, two Galveston park members, garden, strogg, property managers, then breakfast owners, and private STR owners. And I have been invited to observe. The, last month, two of the city attorneys attended and Galveston city's administrator. The task force is aimed to identify problems and come up with solutions for those problems. With all, they, with almost 5,000 short-term rentals, they have challenges that we don't have. But they are also, they al, we also share problems. And so they've come up with some great ideas, and the attorneys will have, present that in Jan, in June to the city council. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they're offering and bring that to the mayor. Also, I learned with a public information request that Jamaica Beach as of April 11th, 2024, has 332 registered short-term rentals. Forty-four of those have not re-registered as of January 12th, 2024. Twenty STRs that are not, and, and 20 STRs that are not registered with the city, that the city is aware of. A grant, that makes a grand total of 352. Last I heard is that we were about 27%, but I think that puts us higher than 27%.
Yeah, a little bit.
But as the numbers change, instead of having to ask for, with a, a public information request, I would hope this information can go on the city website. And that way, as it's updated, maybe quarterly or something, then, then that way, the city wouldn't be, when people talk about how many numbers, we'll have a, a place to go get that data and it'll be the most updated information on the city website.
I think the, the plan is to, to post more of this information once our software platform is selected and, and it's easy to generate.
That'd be marvelous. Thank you for that. And also, a while back, there was some talk with the, for previous administration about an, an org, a city of Jamaica Beach organizational chart. I think that would be a marvelous idea to also have on the city website. And this is one that Sean Hutchinson put together. And this is one that's from the city of Galveston. Just to kind of give you some different ideas on how it could be done. So I was going to give that to you also. But I think that would be helpful, even for me. I know the basic things of who's got this responsibility and so on. But as it changes, I may not be updated on those kind of changes. And that would be nice, and I have to call Kendall with, with each and every question. So that's just a, a suggestion also. And, but it would also help citizens because they call me and ask me, and then I have to call Kendall. And, and which I don't mind doing that at all for Kendall. But he's been real patient with me calling. And last, I had, as everybody knows, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, Arbor Day, those kind of things are real important to, to, about our truths. And I have a challenge for our new council members. Mayor, that's okay if I can, if I can. What it is, is that I have 10 stars for each of you. And I'm going to give you a, a paper so you'll know what to say when you offer a star. We've given out over, with this that I'm going to share tonight, we, we've now reached 8,000, over 8,000 stars that our little community has put together and packaged and shared with our first responders, veterans, and current military when, when we travel. And it's reached all, all across the world, actually. And so I'm going to give you a challenge that you share your 10 stars within a month and come back next month and let me know that you've shared all 10. And hopefully, your experience will happen like I have had and many of us have had during, want to do it again, then again, and again. And, and you'll see the, the mission that this has, has happened and what joy it brings to our, our veterans especially. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Proten?
Yeah, first I want to champion Kaz's suggestion about an ore chart. I don't, I don't, I think we really need it. And we need to also know the relationship of the fire department and any other peripheral operations to just to run. I don't think we have to have names on it, but we're getting very close to have to generate another, another budget. So I think we should at least, for council, okay, discussion, I, I think we should put salaries in there, expected salaries that we, in order to help us develop in a professional way. The second thing I have is I attended the JBIC board meeting Saturday. And I asked them to consider putting a couple of signs up on the canal at the bird sanctuary that would simply say, "No motorized vehicles, please." Because we have people roaring through there, all types of boats and stuff, you know, and just tearing it up. That's all I have.
Alderman Much? Alderman Welch.
How did you know?
Don't judge.
What?
Well, I guess my thing of announcements already out. But I would just, no real report. I would just like to thank the other members of council, staff, and the public for putting up with me the last couple of years.
Thank you. Alderman, for this.
Thank you. I'm going to do a no real report. I want to thank the citizens, the council, the staff of Jamaica Beach for putting up with me. Boy, it's been a wild ride the past eight years. I do want to take a quick moment to thank my lovely wife and my supportive family. For without them, if it wasn't for them, I couldn't have done it. So can't wait to get out of here quick enough.
Alderman Green?
Well, I would also like to thank everyone that came down here tonight to kind of see us all. Just kidding. And it's been an honor to, to serve Jamaica Beach. And of course, I've been doing it since the day I got here in 1969. So a lot of these people here that came, I know, for 45 years. So I hadn't known my wife that long yet, but it's close. We're coming up on 40. So now I just, I'm not going anywhere.
We know that. We hope that anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, before we swear in our new Alderman, I would like to swear. We have plaques for each of you.
Where's my watch?
We have to budget it. Wasn't budgeted yet. So Alderman Green, so it reads, "An appreciation for your 20 years of dedicated services and aldermen to the Jamaica Beach City Council." I had told Woody, yes, he's not going anywhere. He's not getting away. His knowledge is always going to be needed and appreciated in this city. And I think he's going to have to be deemed our official city historian.
Well, it'll have to be Lee Anne. My memory is tall.
Oh, I don't know. I've heard some pretty good stories, Woody. Okay, Alderman Green. I'm doing this by years of service, in case you know.
I thought it was age before beauty.
Well, okay. For your eight years of dedicated services and aldermen to Jamaica Beach City Council. Put those back in there.
Yeah, let's correct it.
All right. Alderman Welch, for your four years of dedicated services and aldermen to the Jamaica Beach City Council. Thank you very much. I appreciate all that you've done and the many, many long hours you've spent serving the city.
Yeah, I didn't get to stand up.
Love it.
Great. Thank you. At this time, I welcome you both, all three, to stay and, and continue to participate. I do expect to call on y'all for opinions and, and history, always. I still have your numbers.
You'll definitely get them.
And there's always the hope of my. Thank you very much.
Are you kicking us off here?
I'm kicking you off. But not very far. Hopefully not very far.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
This is the second or third one I've got. From Action Fire and one from Action Hurricane. When they redid the station three times.
Okay, we are going to swear in in alphabetical order. So our judge, the Honorable Pat Monks?
Gerald Monks, Gerald Patrick Monks. I'm your judge of Jamaica Beach, and I've had the honor of swearing in our new Alderman. That's Aaron Rennick. Very good, very good. We've got to figure out where we're going to do this. Brandon McDermott. Thank you. And then Melissa Joseph.
Yes, we're going to start alphabetically with Ms. Joseph.
Yeah, do you want to do individually or all of this?
All together.
I get, we can do it all together.
We can do it all together. All right, let's do this for picture purposes. Okay, I can, okay, why don't we do this? Normally we do it like this, but I want to get everybody in the picture. Okay, let's, let's, no, you know what? I'll stand here. How's this work? Perfect.
I knew we'd end up right here.
Okay, all right. Okay, everybody, okay. Okay.
Excuse me, sweetie.
Repeat after me. This is your oath of office. I, and state your name. You can figure it out. Yeah, state your name.
I, Aaron Rennick.
I, Brandon McDermott.
I, Melissa Joseph.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Alderman.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of Alderman.
Like an Office of Alderman.
Office of Alderman.
August 11th. For the city of Jamaica Beach,
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
Galveston County,
Galveston County.
and the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability,
And I will, to the best of my ability,
preserve,
Preserve.
protect,
Protect.
and defend the Constitution,
And defend the Constitution.
and the laws of the United States,
And the laws of the United States.
and of the state of Texas,
And of the state of Texas.
so help me God.
So help me God.
If you're ready to take your post.
And also, a reminder to the three of you who have some papers to sign and then you should go to meetings and go visit people.
Okay. No problem.
Okay. Ms. Joseph?
Got you. Thank you very much.
All right, welcome. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Oh, black?
This is your.
Mr. McDermott, you hold yours up real quick?
Okay, so now we're on to new business with our new council. First is appointment of Mayor Proten. And we are required to appoint a Mayor Proten every year. And so with the changing of the guard, we're changing, we're appointing a Mayor Proten at this time. And my recommendation for Mayor Proten is the people's choice because Mr. Aaron did receive the most number of votes. And I think the people's choice. So at this point, I am recommending that Mr. Aaron Alderman, Aaron Rennick, be the new Mayor Proten of the city of Jamaica Beach. Do you want to have a motion to approve?
I make that motion to approve, Aaron Rennick, to be the new Samaritan of Jamaica Beach.
Do I have a second? Call second. All in favor? All in favor? Okay, next is discussion, consideration, and take action to accept the fiscal year 2019-2020 audits. So, we know we were three years behind. Unfortunately, we're still three years behind, but we're one done. So, it's been sent out. I hope all of you had a chance to look at it. Kendall, would you like to highlight a few of the significant findings from it?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So, as the mayor indicated, we are substantially behind in the annual audits. This is for fiscal year 2019-2020, which was just recently completed. I think the good news is that there were no, I mean, there were some findings that we'll talk briefly about, but you will see that there were no material weaknesses identified by our auditors. This first page that I'm showing you is the letter from the head auditor. It outlines their duties as far as the audit is concerned and the information provided. I just wanted to quickly highlight her statement that we have no knowledge of fraud or suspected fraud that affects the city of Jamaica Beach, and that would involve management, employees, or others, where fraud could have material effect on financial statements. So, of that letter, that's the most significant thing to highlight. As we get into the draft letter of the audit, you'll see some of the errors that I highlighted in yellow. The first part, where it explains the, some of the things that I, the two different types of weaknesses that are being afforded in audit. A material weakness, as defined here, is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal controls, such that there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. Of the deficiencies, a material weakness is the most severe. As they identify, they did not identify any of the serious material weaknesses. However, the next lower category is a significant deficiency. It is not as severe as a material weakness, but they are enough merit, they're important enough to merit attention, according to our auditor. So, I just want to point out a couple of things that were brought up in this audit. I will also throw out the terrifying statement that nobody here within City Hall was present during these audits, so, during this financial period. This first one talks about the use of the general ledger. And that, in layman's terms, it talks about the city says, "With the exception of cash investment equal and equity accounts, there is no activity booked into the balance sheets during this year. All transactions go through the temporary accounts and therefore must be reclassified during the audit." That is one of the reasons that these audits are taking so long, because the auditors are physically going in and reclassifying many of the entries because they were not booked correctly, I guess. We use QuickBooks, and they have not been using all of the modules that are available in QuickBooks as they're going, as they're entering our expenditures and our revenues. And so, trying to think it, they use a temporary class designation for these entries, and they're not, they're not the, they're just a general term entry. And so, the auditors are having to go back, relook at all the expenditures and the revenues and the identifications with them, and properly reclassify them into the proper accounts. So, that has been one of the reasons that it's taken so long. We are correcting that. We currently, we are doing a much more thorough job of those entries. I will also let you know that we are migrating away from QuickBooks. QuickBooks is a software system based for small business and not really designed for municipal fund accounting. So, we are in the process of a conversion to AccuFund with our goal of having the conversion completed by October 1st, which is the beginning of our new budget. So, that will greatly enhance our capabilities when it comes to recording our financial transactions, but it also is gonna be beneficial for our auditors to be able to go back and they won't have to take the time to be reclassifying these things. I do wanna point out, you'll see these comments that are in green, and these are comments that are pointed to, they state the city secretary, but in our case, it's actually our finance director. So, we commend the city secretary for maintaining a fixed asset depreciation schedule, which is updated at the year-end to reflect additions and dispositions during the year. And there's also a comment that we commend the city secretary for providing us with detailed year-end accounts payable schedules. And we recommend that a journal entry be made to record payments, accounts payable. And really, it's just a credit to Esther and the work that she's done making the improvements. I know her, I was not here when this, when they gave this information to the auditors late last year. I know it was Esther and the mayor who worked tirelessly to provide the information because it, quite honestly, it's not readily available within our bookkeeping system. So, I know it took a lot of work, but they also started to make the necessary changes and improvements when they identified what areas were, we were weak in. The accounts payable, you'll see in the yellow, and the accounts receivable, those are deficiencies. And really, what they talk about is that the accounts payables and receivables are not being booked to reflect the correct data services. So, if, let's say you pay your water bill in November, it's actually for the October bill. It should be booked into, well, let's use October and September because that's a different budget year. So, if you pay your bill in October, it's actually for your September service, which is a different fiscal year. It should be booked in September, but we have been booking it in the month we receive it. So, those are incorrect. So, they have to, the auditors have to go back, reclassify all those types of deals. The same thing is happening with the accounts payable. If we may pay a bill in January, but it really should have been credited to the previous November or something like that. So, there, those are deficiencies, they're not, you know, they're not, they don't rise to the level of a material weakness, but those are things we need to correct and have, we are correcting. But in this time period, those activities were taking place. So, we, as I said, we are making changes to, so going forward, we won't have to worry about those issues. Another, I'm not sure why I highlighted that comment, honestly. The difficulties encountered in performing the audit, and it really was what I've just kind of alluded to. Most of the financial data recorded during the year was processed through the revenue and expense accounts, the accounts receivable, accounts payable, prepaid expenses and fixed asset modules, which are critical components of the accounting process are not being utilized. That's where it's talking about, all the modules of the QuickBooks accounting, they were not utilizing them all. And it created, it created issues for our auditors being able to work through our books and to provide an audit in a timely manner. I'm also going to throw this out there that we do not expect the next fiscal years to be any cleaner. We expect that there's gonna be a lot of repeat of manual work performed by the auditors. I know we have been hopeful that we could expedite the next couple of audits to get caught up, but I think I need to temper expectations to say that that's, reality's probably not because there's gonna be the same types of deficiencies still exist in 2021, 21, 22 that are gonna slow those audits. And just one more positive comment for the purposes of the letter. A disagreement with management's financial accounting reporting or auditing matter, basically, said, "We are pleased to report that no such disagreements arose during the course of this audit." And really, that, again, is back to Esther and to the mayor. You know, the auditors have those discussions. Moving forward, those discussions will happen with me. But, basically, they're telling, that we upheld our end of the agreement as far as the audit, providing the services. And so, kudos to those. And I did not, why the actual, I just looked on the letter to see if I can quickly look what I do with the audit, it's so, or in a format you can see. I knew I had it, I just wasn't sure where I put it. It's just a highlight, this is a financial, it is a government-wide financial statement, so it is an audit of both our general fund and our municipal utilities as well. And there, it explains that there, how the city government, how our financial statements are divided between governmental activities and business-type activities. Governmental activities are, basically, the general fund. Business activities is what we would call, what we would call the municipal fund, the utility fund, enterprise fund, different names for the same types of things. And as we get into the new budget next year, we've redesigned our budget a little bit, so you'll see some different nomenclature as we move forward through the budgeting process. Just a very quick overview. The total net position of the city increased by 339,991, so almost 340,000 during the year of 2019 to 2020. And the, it does talk about also, our net assets, our total assets, or assets totaling almost 80,000 were purchased during that year. But it is, it is a, it is a financially balanced budget, it's not a structurally balanced budget because we did utilize a little bit of reserves, I believe, that year. But we still, revenues exceeded expenditures by almost 340,000. And so, I guess I don't know how much detail, Mayor, would you like me to go into about this? Or anybody of the council, or you have specific questions maybe that I can ask or I can answer? I will take long-term debt, the city has no outstanding bond of debt, so, you know, that's always a positive.
I don't think we, did I technically open up the motion to discuss it?
No. No, I, we didn't.
So, first of all, let me ask for a motion to discuss the fiscal year 2019-2020 audit. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Just a second.
Okay. So, to open it up for discussion, does any council member have any specific questions about the audit?
Good, Mayor. The classifications, is there a standard municipal classification for all the accounts payable and accounts receivable? I mean, is there a basis? I don't understand why this other software is used ahead of time. You know, this QuickBooks rather than a, I mean, I don't know, it's history, it's changing history.
I can't speak to why because, and QuickBooks does work, it just does not work effectively. There, the AccuFund is built for municipal government, and...
So, it has those classifications already in the software?
Actually, we develop, and maybe I need to make sure I understand when you say classifications. So, we develop the funds, so the broad category are the funds, general fund, revenue, enterprise fund, water, sewer, trash, hotel occupancy tax fund. And then, they're broken down farther within that in departments, whether it's administration, police, operations...
Maintenance.
Yeah. And then, further broken down into line items. And so, we develop that structure, and then it is put into the AccuFund. So, is that what you're asking of us?
Yeah, 'cause I was just wondering, I mean, it sounds like everything was kind of pushed into the same bucket instead of having individual buckets.
There was, there was a lot of that, and if you take a look at the budget, you'll see a lot of recurring project or things that appeared in multiple spots. And, like I said, I can't speak to that, you know, but moving forward with this starting budget, we have cleaned that up, it's uniform across the departments. So, and we've tried to make it broad enough and specific enough to make it easy to understand. And, you know, as I said, as we get into the budgeting, I think you'll pick up on it quickly, and you'll be able to, we'll be able to tell you that Fund 10, 20, 52, 200 is the police department's south.
Sure.
Those types of things. So, and so, if that's, I wanna make sure that I answered what you were asking.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, you know, what you're telling us now is that, you know, we have the classification set up properly so that when the, when these things are entered, when the dollar amounts are entered, that they're entered appropriately so that this auditing entity doesn't have to reinvent the wheel every time.
Right, yeah.
I mean, that's kind of the whole.
Well, and I don't know that, I'm sure it's not something they've never seen, it's just more labor-intensive.
Okay. Yeah, no, that sounds good, thank you.
And honestly, there's some, there's some issues, but the fact that there are no material weaknesses says, you know, that still, the accounting procedures were followed, there's no hint of impropriety, there's some glitches and things that could be improved upon. But, in essence, they did a decent job, there's just, there's room for improvement.
So, the data's all there, it just needs to be managed.
Yes, it's just not really clear.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and also, my understanding is historically, at the time, during this fiscal year, everything was in one QuickBooks account. And, but, that makes it hard to separate the funds and track them. The QuickBooks isn't designed to do that within one business.
Okay.
So, and I don't know, we don't really know enough yet about how the next fiscal year was done. I think it was still all in one, wasn't it, Esther?
At some point, it was broken into two. So, I think at that time, the data that was put in there was supposed to be sorted general or municipal, and it wasn't. So, they have to figure out by what was put in, which went to what. But now, that it's separate, you know, it looks fine, but when you have to try to pull it together as one whole report, then you, they're still doing... But now that it's separate, you know, it's, it looks fine, but when you have to try to pull it together as one whole report, then you, they're still doing double work.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so, so this year's going to be, this next fiscal year is going to be very challenging. Because somewhere in the course of that year, we went from one QuickBooks business.
Right.
With two separate accounting systems within that business or coding system within that business. And, and then the previous city secretary, when she came on board in the summer of this next fiscal year, she separated them into two separate businesses within QuickBooks. So it made them separate, but then when we share cost between our, our municipal fund and our general fund, Esther can tell you it's very manual. And to generate a report that shows you that budget, she has to close out one business, open the next business, kind of manually cut and paste. So it, having two separate businesses within QuickBooks made it easier to code, but much harder to report and, and show clear expenditures in a given area. So the new ACU fund accounting, as he's pointed out, it's designed to handle within a city multiple funds. And when we talk about funds, to add more clarity, we have our general fund, and I'm not sure what we're going to call it moving forward. But our general fund, basically the revenue stream is everything except utilities. So it is our property tax, our sales tax, our, our hotel motel tax.
Can we separate hotel?
I was gonna say, we are.
It would, it will be.
It will be. We are, moving forward, I know we're going to have three funds and possibly four. Or we have to be more than that.
We.
I wonder.
We have, we have the potential to have, uh, several. We'll have three for certain, we're, we still, um, the, um, the investments, um, we're looking at.
Oh, yeah, tracking them better way.
But also I'd like to eventually get to a capital improvement fund.
Oh, yes.
And, um, and so, but the, the most immediate need, you'll have a general fund, that's, that's always what that's called. And then, um, you know, like I said, we can continue to call it municipal fund. My preference is that they're a util, it's a utilities fund.
Yes.
Um, but then, but they're actually separate. It would be a water, a sewer and a, and a trash would, so essentially that's three separate funds.
Yeah.
But, uh, and a, and a little bit, it's just normal pictures.
Yeah, yeah. The way, the way it is now, it's, it's hard to follow and make sense of. So I know Kendall and Esther have been hard at work restructuring how it's laid out. So it's much cleaner. Because right now to track what we collect on a given fee versus what we spend in a given area. So like when I want to come forward and say, hey, guys, we got to collect more money for trash. It should be a really transparent, obvious need for that because we've got it in a separate trash fund. It clearly shows revenue in and expenses out. And, and right now you have to build reports, uh, by, by digging through some stuff. So it's going to help significantly.
Tell the question, do we show our budget to actuals? Are we doing that monthly to show budget to actuals so we know how much we've been spending versus what we budgeted for?
Yes, and then we will provide a, a quarterly, we provide a quarterly report here to the council. And as we get into this new fund, we'll be able to more readily, easily, um, provide those reports. We can provide them now, it's just, it's a lot of work.
Is it QuickBooks, uh, desktop or is it online? QuickBooks Online?
Unfortunately, it's still the desk.
I'm saying, I, I work personally and it's online, it's wonderful.
We, we've tried for months to get that.
So you can pull reports so easily.
And unfortunately, we have ran into some roadblocks. That's why we, that's why we pivoted and looked to just change completely.
Okay, the other thing too is, um, to, to me, it's interesting how we give, I don't know, when I look at these audits and the total assets, just kind of remember as you go back and look at them, you know, it does show your total wealth, but it's also our capital assets. So, I mean, not that we're intending to sell anything, but, um, when the financial people look at us, they look at our total wealth. So it includes our city hall and our vehicles and all of the water lines and the super lines. And the depreciation schedule is listed in the audit as to what rate of depreciation we have. And then we, whenever we make major capital improvements, those are added to that schedule. Uh, and then of course that triggers the depreciation.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, any, any other?
No, I was, I was going to make one, the last highlighted there, the yellow, um, citizen, they currently have an outstanding, uh, project from Hurricane Ike. That is the noon walkover funds, the hundred and four thousand, so, um, but.
Yeah. We're working on that. Have we gotten a bill from them yet for this audit?
Yes, we just did.
How much?
Twenty-two thousand.
Less than we mentioned. Okay, better than I expected, yes, Mayor?
What I want to say is hallelujah, that one done, one done, thank you so much. This has just been, I, I have asked about this and asked about it since 2020. So this is marvelous to finally see this done.
I, I will throw.
Hopefully we can start doubling up at some point.
I will throw out this caveat, Esther and I were at a budget training today. And TML has a service that we've looked into. And it comes at a cost, but they indicated that, you know, they, they help smaller cities that have, that, um, have had financial issues or, or like, you know, turnover, bank reconciliation, you know, if they've had, if they've had turnover, things like that, and, and they need some help kind of getting things straightened out. Um, but they said they have been, they turned around three audits in six months for one city. Uh, so we're, we're going to inquire to them about.
Perfect.
Uh, but it, it does come at a kind of a hefty cost, so, um, but.
Savings.
Well, let's, let's talk about it and put it in the budget.
But we are, we are looking at, you know, other options.
If it's worth it, yeah. Yeah, I guess one thing I'd still like to further understand, because I've done some research, but not enough, is in the event that, that, uh, was with the hurricane this summer, um, what? Are we prepared to negotiate with FEMA, discuss with FEMA? What will be the potential impact of the speed of reimbursements for our funds? Can we start doing anything proactively to mitigate by, by, by showing action, showing activity schedules? And have that ready to go, uh, and, and maybe something with TML?
And unfortunately, it doesn't want to work that way. But, uh, Esther and I sat through three days of training on that very subject last week, disaster accounting, so.
And Mayor, when I was at the last FEMA meeting last year, I was like, we're out here, you know, Jamaica Beach is available if you need a place to put a pond. So I, I let everybody know that we're here.
Yeah. Anyway, I just didn't know if there was anything we could do because I.
Document, document, document.
I, well, I've under, I've understood though that because our audits are behind schedule, that it can potentially impact our ability to, to get FEMA money. So if there's anything we can do to investigate the, the reality of that? And anything that could be done proactively to, to mitigate that if, if that's true? And I don't know if it is true. As I'm saying, I would just, I've not investigated it enough. Okay, uh, any other comments about the audit? No? Okay, do I have a motion to, uh, to accept this year 2019, 2020 audit?
I'll make a motion to accept if you all want.
Okay, okay, good, okay. All in favor of accepting this year 2019, 2020 audit?
Unanimous.
All right, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Uh, and, and I guess Kendall loses next steps. Do they, do we send them a letter saying we accept it? And then they reply to us with draft off of it? And then our, our web specialist can, can post a dis require?
Yeah, I have a letter that you required to sign.
Okay, all right, did you know the next steps? All right, thank you.
And then it can go on the website once you sign it?
No, they have to sit and inspect the non-draft version.
They will, they will send us a clean version.
Okay.
Yeah, once, um, but I have the letter to sign. And it's actually one of the letters I showed you.
It's a management representation letter, yeah.
And then, and then they will send us the clean copy, then we'll post it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Now, Mayor, you skip item number two.
I skipped item number two? No, this is, so the audit. Two is the grant stack, okay.
Related grant application, letter of support.
Oh, we, we printed off the wrong agenda again. Right, but I think, um, what was posted was it, it doesn't have number, have anything about a grant.
The, uh, the finalized, the finalized one. Yeah, we printed one that was not the finalized, well, it's right here.
Okay, I'll, I'll look up here then. Okay, um, all right, we'll back up to number two, we just did number three. Discussion consideration and take action to approve a letter of support for Galveston County for a beach-related grant application. So it's, it's basically asking for support to generate the letter and send it. So what it is, is, uh, City of Galveston has requested an engineering, grant money to do an engineering study to eliminate the drainage in, uh, Pirates Beach East or Pirates Beach West on the beach side. Currently, everything from three double oh five drains to the beach. Uh, and it should drain towards the bay and, and otherwise. So all the runoff from that neighborhood due to navatorial drift, um, brings, brings the runoff and pollutants and anything else from that neighborhood to the state park and to us. And the City of Galveston's request is for a very large sum of money, grant money from GLO for two and a half million dollars to do the engineering evaluation for this. But before GLO will authorize that grant, they would like a letter of, City of Galveston would like a letter of support from us saying that, you know, we would support this endeavor because it will, it will help our water quality. So really this is, this is a request to, uh, just provide a letter saying we recognize that benefits to the drainage at Pirates Beach East and Pirates Beach West will improve our water quality. And they're also reaching out to the state park for a similar, uh, letter of support.
Could we, could we get any of that grants to help with beach homer?
Not at this time. What I have requested of the coastal resources manager from City of Galveston is that he definitely keep us in the loop as they, if they get the grant money and if they progress it so that we could maybe share some ideas or, or discover some novel ways to improve the drainage of each homer. So, um, and then also as they progress that, understanding what it might cost to, to actually shift the drainage. And I don't know what they're going to come up with a solution, if it's going to be, you know, sumps and pumps or grade change. But, um, but this is a request for the engineer, so.
So what water is intended to improve?
Uh, reach water.
Um, in front of.
Yeah, yeah.
Beachside drainage.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, this is, this is just asking for council, really council approval to draft that letter and submit. So do I have a, a motion to, um, I don't know, here. A motion to approve sending a letter of support for Galveston County for beach-related grant application? Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Oh, second. Okay, all in favor of submitting that letter to City of Galveston?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let me see if I'm on track again. Uh, discussion consideration and take action to approve city hall roof replacements. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I have a motion to be replaced.
Granted, seconded, did you get that?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. Kendall, I think the summary was in the agenda.
Uh, yes, Mayor. So honestly, it, obviously you can tell that the roof is being replaced. So, um, the, the story behind this is the roof has been leaking since January and has been temporarily covered. Uh, we, um, we made a claim to insurance and they paid out a very small sum, five, six thousand dollars. And we protested that, um, because all of our, all of our roofing contractors were telling us that we had far more substantial damage in that. We really needed to push for a roof replacement. We went back to insurance and, and asked for, you know, we appealed that. And then they determined that they really didn't even have the coverage. Um, that, uh, the coverage is through the, um, Texas Windstorm Insurance Agent Association and, and not through TML. And, and so when we got the right insurance company out on the job to, to inspect it, then they agreed with the rest of the roofing companies, they guessed we, uh, we needed a full roof replacement. And because this has been going on for months already and we're getting into the storm season, the roofer who is replacing the roof right now, who had, who was the, the selected bidder, had an opening in his schedule to be able to do it immediately. So, um, I use my emergency authorization for the expenditure of, of our share of the deductible, which is twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. My, my spending authority only goes to twenty-five thousand on, on a normal. So they said I use my emergency authority to authorize the project. And they started work yesterday and expect to be done tomorrow. What I'm asking for tonight is ratification of, of that agree.
Okay, do I have a motion to ratify the emergency expenditure which was nine hundred and forty?
Well, it's, it's actually twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty.
But nine hundred and forty in excess.
Yes, exactly.
Of your, uh, individual approval. So do I have a, a motion to ratify? Do I have a second? Oh, second. Okay, all in favor of ratifying the deductible expense of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty?
Yes.
Forty dollars, okay.
Two dollars.
Yes, a two dollars. Okay, next is discussion and consideration of project to repair the city's bulkhead at the wastewater treatment plants. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I make the motion to discuss.
Do I have a second? Okay, first of all, I should note that for today, this is, this is, this is only discussion of this project. We are not asking for approval of this project at this time. So I think Robert is going to lead us through the, the issues and the bids received. We'll all stand on our head.
There you go. If you look over here on, on, on the left-hand side, you have two hundred and three feet of bulkhead from, from beginning to the turn. Okay, so it's two hundred, two hundred and three millimeter from, from. From Rita Drive to the east side of, of where it turns down, canal. If you look over or if you flip your, if you over, you can see that Google has, if you look over here, you can actually see that it's not a straight line. It actually has pretty bad damage right there. You flip your next chart, your next, you will see the actual damage. Okay, you flip your next chart, your next, you will see the actual damage. You see those little poles, all those are the tiebacks that are corroded. That's key, you see pipe around it to try to keep it from the corrosion, but, you know, as all things out here, the elements, we're thinking, oh, corroded, next slide. If you look over here, it's to show where he was after separation. And then the final one, you can see there's a new chunk coming out. Next down, right there. And ladies and gentlemen, that council, that's, we have a pretty bad problem here. Uh, we've had, we put out a bid, we put it out on tips, we came, came back with several bids for repairs and, and to fix the entire east side over there at the bulkhead. We came out with re- repelling hole goods that we would, that we would do business with. Um, however, the one bid that came in above all was, uh, one that we didn't go through tips. He was just somebody that represented here in, in the village. And that would be May, uh, Bulkhead and Pirate Services. And I'll look. Okay, so. Kendall will tell you about the bid price?
So we, um, we actually asked, uh, for a couple of different projects. We asked, um, to look at, uh, here on that north, that north side, that area was damaged. We looked to, we asked them to, um, give us a price for repair, which would be, um, re, you know, pulling the panels and reusing the panels that are there and, and then new tiebacks of that damaged section, um, this section right here. We also, um, as you go around the corner up here on the east side, um, we have, we feared that there may be that similar type of damaging occurring there. We have some washouts, so we asked, um, them to also provide a bid for investigating that, to see, you know, is there, is that damage occurring to the tiebacks? Are, are they deteriorating? If so, what would, um, to excavate that and re- repair that. We also, and I forgot to say, this section here, that was for replacement or full, uh, either repair or full replacement of that damaged section right here that. It's about a hundred and thirty linear feet of damage, hundred and forty, hundred and twenty-seven linear feet that's actually damaged. And then, the final part that we asked about was over here on the east side. If you, um, I don't know that the picture really shows it, but right about here, the height of the, of the bulkhead drops, what is it, eight inches? Eight inches, and it, it's lower down here. Um, so we, um, we also asked for a price to cap that so that it would make it level from here all the way down to the, to the far south end. Um, but honestly, our focus is, is right now is on that damaged area, uh, because that's, that is what is the most pressing and, um, that is the amounts that we had budgeted, um, for this year for, for the replacement. We do have, um, I believe approximately a hundred seventy thousand dollars in budgeted for, um, bulkhead replacement maintenance. Um, the, the bid from Mabe's Bulkhead, it's broken down in, um, in a, just kinda as I described, this first one to remove and dispose of a hundred and thirty linear feet of the existing concrete bulkhead, sixty-five thousand dollars. Then to replace the bulkhead with new concrete bulkhead, um, is ninety-one thousand. So the total, the total for that project on the north side would be a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. They did not, um, they, they were in belief that the panels were not reusable. Um, they did not provide it, they did not provide a price for reutilizing the panels. Um, again, that's, that's really the area that we need to, um, put immediate attention to and obviously what we have the finan- financial means to do. The second part of, of that bid was, had I, no, I had to go up there, a second. I know I put it in there. Um, to excavate that, that area right here, it's approximately, um, two hundred and twenty linear feet, uh, um, to, to look at, to, um, excavate it, inspect the tiebacks, um, is nineteen thousand eight hundred, is twenty-seven thousand five hundred. To that concrete cap that we talked about, that is about two hundred and twenty feet, is twenty thousand dollars. And then for every, if the inspected tiebacks and if they need to be, um, and, um, if they need to be new and replace the dead men, um, it's eight hundred dollars, um, per tieback to dead men. Um, a total of forty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for this side right here to inspect it, um, make, make repairs and, um, raise that, raise that bulkhead so that it, that it was even across there. So, that's the, that's the path we've been kinda heading down over the last couple of months. Um, and we wanted to kind of get your, kinda bring you up to speed really as, as new council members as to where we were with this. Uh, we will be bringing back a recommendation at the next council meeting, uh, for action. But though.
And also just so, when you all saw the pictures, did you see the PVC pipe in the Roman area? Those aren't water pipes. They actually encased the tiebacks and it, it's partially, um, what's the word again? Um, estimated.
Premature deterioration.
That it had premature deterioration, yes, due to holding moisture against it. And the, the concern is that this is everywhere, all the way around. And, which is why the cost estimate was asked to, let's, let's fix what's broken, but let's look at that entire length of that height and style of bulkhead, which takes us around the turn, and let's execute, plus we do have some washout areas there. But let's, let's look at those tiebacks and if we can spend an estimate of forty-seven thousand dollars now, which I think was the top estimate of all the tiebacks needed replacing. Uh, is forty-seven thousand dollars spent now to remediate it better than having to replace another hundred and thirty feet of bulkhead at some future point? So, uh, as Kendall pointed out, staff will be putting summaries together and this did turn out to be the best bid, uh, from, from all bids. One company did, did propose repairing it, right?
Yes.
But, uh, and I think that was a forty-seven thousand dollar cost, Robert?
Yes.
Um, you know, but, uh.
Yeah, I'll say.
And if anybody, if anybody has any leverage with Olson and Olson, I talked to him multiple times. You know, he agreed we were gonna meet and, you know, you have, you have to catch him on the right day. But if anybody has a mechanism to catch him on the right day, um. And it, um, I know his, his feeling is it's probably not very repairable either. But it'd be nice to, to have one more bid from a, from a local contractor.
Actually, um.
Yeah, 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 this is just, this is just discussion for you.
I feel, I actually went through and compared all the bids. Uh, I think there's a little bit of a scope discrepancy on, on some of them. Uh, I know that, uh, the basic IDIQ was a little bit higher, but they're proposing a vinyl U-channel. I'm not a bulkhead guy, they're proposing a vinyl U-channel as a lot more premium than I. I, uh, imagine Mabe's is, uh, doing concrete panels. Um, and a lot of them didn't even address specifically the way that you asked sort of. Uh, so, I agree that I think Mabe's is the best value there. I think they exactly quoted what you asked them to quote. Uh, Branch, one, looks like they want to replace everything, very premium price. Uh, Mr. Home Repair and Gulf Coast Marine, I don't think quoted exactly the entire scope. And then, uh, Basic IDIQ was a little confusing as well, but, uh, I think scope-wise, uh, Mabe's definitely was the winner there. It's a very high level.
Thank you, I appreciate this.
You know, still remember, twelve hundred feet, couple hundred dollars a foot. That's what we're talking about.
I don't.
Here. Let me.
To do a hundred and thirty feet of bucket.
You can send me one.
Twelve hundred dollars a foot. I was thinking it would be, but, yeah. I was thinking it would probably come in around seven fifty-eight. Um, the other thing is, you know, that, that Mabe's, Mabe's panels are fourteen feet.
Well, they can do sixteen feet now.
But he bid fourteen.
Oh, okay.
He bid fourteen feet.
Okay.
Um, whereas some of the others are sixteen, maybe, maybe fourteen is okay. We need to go down and check the mudline, okay? Bulkheads are not a scientific engineered thing, there's some basic rules. You could look on any of the, and I know you have the, and the, um, you know, the, the plastic ones and all.
Yeah.
It's half in and half out. In which the panels should be lumenous, so they go in the, the mudline, half in, half out.
Right.
So we need to walk down there and pick stick down there and see what the mudline is.
Okay.
Or at least make that as a specification.
Yep. Agreed.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I don't see where, I, I read his bid, it makes you be contracted, I, I, I read his bid, but, maybe you guys saw it, but looking at this business about digging up behind him and all.
Mm-hmm.
Whoa, um, he says inspect tiebacks, eight hundred per new tieback, dead men replacing, open. What he's saying is that, I think what he's saying, perhaps verify this, is that the number of tiebacks aren't in his number. He wants to see how many he has to replace. Then he, this would be an adder, it's not in the job.
That's right.
You with me?
Yeah, yeah, I followed, I, I read that last night, yeah.
So, that's my only comment, I, I think we need to do some clarification and give them specifications. And I think one of mine is the depth in the mudline, but that really is probably the, the most common respected criteria in bulkhead construction.
Agreed. Do you know how old the existing bulkhead is? When was it installed?
Yeah, well, they're gonna make the new panels.
Again, so I was just curious, you know.
One thing to be.
Life span of the.
One thing to be comfortable with is, the new panels that they're gonna cast in place, they will be strong enough because they have to lift them, okay? They have to lift them with a crane. They're gonna be sitting like this, they gotta pick them up, right? You with me? So they will be structurally probably sound. And the cap part, I didn't see any details on what they were gonna do on the cap. I think we should have some of that in.
Do we require any kind of warranty with any of these vendors?
That was my question.
Because I don't, yeah.
That was my question.
I mean, I think that's pretty basic, right?
Yeah.
I wanna make sure that they're.
And with weather and hurricanes, what happens there if there's?
Young, young division of the contract.
Also, I was wondering on Mabe's, and it's that there, it's, it was for December of twenty-three. Has that, right, has this, has this, uh, bid changed in price? Cause it's, it's old to me, it's, it's, it's old.
I will, I will acquire the kit back, beginning to bear, uh, early on, when we first started the process.
You're just remain sealed until.
It's remained sealed until we were ready to.
Although we have visited with him in person, he did not indicate that there was any change.
Any changes, you know, pricing has changed this year, and we're getting close to hurricanes, and I hope they might go up in price.
Around the table here, does anybody else know any other contractors? I don't.
Olson and Olson.
Olson and Olson is premier.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor. Um, whenever, whenever Mabe's goes to inspect those, uh, on the east side, when he goes to inspect those tiebacks, I can assure you, he's gonna break them. Cause when you inspect them, you can't inspect them until you dig them up. When you dig them up, they're gonna break them.
That's right.
So, unless he plans on digging them up by hand, he's gonna break them. I would plan on breaking them if I was Mabe's, because I wanna put new ones in.
Good point.
Yeah, good point.
So, when you allow him to inspect them, expect he's gonna break them.
Okay, so.
However, he does that, it's not just replacing them, because they are held structurally in place with the cap. I didn't see, I guess the eight hundred dollars includes replacing all the caps.
I believe it, it had the cap. I thought so too.
It almost looks like a hundred thousand instead of forty-six.
Yeah, it could be, it could be intensive to remediate, uh, potentially what's there. So, um.
So can we have a redid, kinda clean it up a little bit?
Yep.
Go for another.
Yep, Kendall, would you?
Yeah, oh.
Re- revisit the bid, get information on, uh, well, and.
Give them some scope.
Scaling engineer, right?
The other thing too, we didn't pursue, I, I mean, and clearly we have a cost of replacing the whole thing, but it's a matter of where you would tie in a vinyl bulkhead, bulkhead to the existing concrete bulkhead.
That's ridiculous, that.
Because like Eddie didn't need us, you know, and he only does vinyl.
I saw that our engineer did that sketch, did you see that? Mercier did the design for Branch.
Um. Oh. Yes, I think Mercier was working with Branch.
Okay, cause it's Sam, Sam did, he's got this most unusual design. No, 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 I asked for that, I asked the engineer to, to us, and each one of the people who bid it on it received a copy of that engineer.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, so you had it engineered?
Yes, no, it had been engineered two, three years ago.
Yes, and you had them look at it and give a design?
Everybody who, everybody who bid it, received, received a copy of.
But we paid for that.
Years ago.
Yeah, this has been, this, this repair has been in the budget, I think, for three years.
Three years, yeah. That was the first part.
So, uh. And how much did it budget again for this project? A hundred and sixty, it was a hundred and six three years ago.
Where would we get the extra money for this?
Well.
We just budgeted it for this year.
Yeah.
So, um, as part of our, uh, yeah, general capital expenditures.
Yeah, a hundred and sixty was budgeted for bulkhead replacement. There was an extra ten thousand, another line item for bulkhead maintenance or something. Uh, so, um, a hundred and seventy total funds is what is available.
Yeah.
But you really need to take a look at that, at the engineer.
Yeah.
Do we have a pay that, like, if, if contacting Olson and Olson to provide them hours?
Um, we can try again.
I'll, I'll see if I can do it.
Do you have a relationship with George?
His wife. Who's the boss?
I don't, I don't have one.
Just don't.
In fact, I'm, I'm tired of you. I'm tired, so don't bring me up, at all.
Okay, so, so after this discussion, I, I think Kendall and Robert have.
Working order.
Working order. Okay, on to the, to the next discussion item is, do I have a motion to discuss adopting a resident's home set exemption from city out-of-labor taxation?
I'll make that.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so, um.
Oh, I don't know.
We can, sorry. It's a discussion, right?
Well, we don't, we actually don't have enough information.
Strictly a discussion, right?
Yeah, this is just a discussion to make, to make sure we're theor, you know, sort of hypothetically theoretically.
Cause I don't have to ask things.
In favor of pursuing it, uh, our city, our county tax assessor collector Cheryl Johnson owes us a summary of what the potential impact to our revenue will be if we adopt a homestead exemption. Um, as well as the over sixty, we're also considering, uh, the over sixty-five exemption, so, uh, we don't.
Are we, are we considering the, the disabled veteran?
That one we already, I think we already do that one. Um, I can't go look at my tax statement to find out, but I, I think the disabled vet is in place. Does anybody know from their tax bill?
Except I haven't found any ordinances over that were laid to.
Where we adopted it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, we are looking at the whole slate, homestead, over sixty-five, and disabled vet. And most cities do it in stages. They start off with like ten percent of the allowed amount and let that kind of work through their, their revenue system. And then they go to adopting, you know, some percentage of. So I, I feel like the recommendation we'll be bringing forward is to adopt ten percent of the homestead for the first year. And then, see, does the impact really work out as predicted? Or, you know, what's the true impact to our revenue? Um, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, um, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I did a, um, public information request to TCAT last February. And I went back and found this, and, uh, what they sent me was, included the information that we have three hundred and seventy-two homes that are homesteaded here. We also have another two hundred that is over sixty-five. So that would be what, three seventy-two homes that it would bet, up bet.
Yeah, no, it's a large number of, of our homes are homesteaded, so.
Becoming a nursing home.
With the over sixty-five. Uh, anyway, she owes us the summary of the impacts. And we will bring forward that recommendation, but it's like before I start really pushing and on, we need these numbers, we need these numbers. We want a council direction, that this is something that the council would like to pursue.
Yep.
So, um, I guess we need a, really, we've had the discussion, just minuteed that it's. Do I need to take official vote?
There's no.
Here's no vote, can't vote, didn't put a vote. No, it's just, it's just a discussion and, you know, we have concurrence. Support, we have support.
Who do we, who do we go to, Melissa? How do we, how do we find out? I mean, this is something that is way over my head.
We've had discussions.
I have no experience.
Can be a president, can be a president.
Yeah, we, we, we met with her.
She was gonna provide us a, a summary of, of the financial impact that, that we would, we would see. And you will see a financial impact that will, that will impact your revenue.
There will be a reduction, there will be a reduction in our revenue next year. Um, over, over time, it balances out, but, um, but initially, it, it, it will impact our revenue. Um, we are also making up revenue with a hundred and forty thousand proposed from sales tax. Um, and it is anticipated that this ten percent in homestead will not exceed that. I think initial numbers we were talking about is like sixty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars first year, um, with the ten percent.
Yeah, I, I slept since six.
I, yeah, I do too. Um, okay, well.
Did Ms. Johnson indicate when she was gonna provide that report or?
It's.
It, well, it, it has to be almost immediately, um, they have to, we have to have this done before July first.
Yes, we have to make a proposal, we have to submit our, our timelines and our, our estimates by Jul, by early July. So by July first, we have to notify them that we are intending to, to implement. So at the next city council meeting, um, we will probably have it in, we have to pass an ordinance, adopt it. So we will be providing a discussion point as well as adoption and acceptance of proposed homestead. Be it, and, and right now, our proposal is probably to start with ten percent and fully understand the impact, but we'll have that ready to discuss next time. Okay, so, next thing on the agenda is discussion and consideration of a proposed beach user fee. So do I have a motion to discuss the proposed beach user fee?
I'll make that motion to discuss beach user fee.
Okay, go ahead, second. Okay, so, um, the discussion on this is, as, as we all know, this is always a hot topic. Previous surveys have indicated a, a large number of our citizens would be in support of a beach user fee. Um, we also know that there's a large number of citizens that are, uh, very much opposed to a beach user fee. Um, uh, Gil has been championing this endeavor for a while as, uh, being an advocate, and he drove the surveys a couple of years ago. So, um, we have been in preliminary conversations with the GLO about what a beach user fee would look like and what it would entail. I had the police force last summer start counting cars on the beach every day around two o'clock. Because the, the way the GLO, the Open Beaches Act says you can charge a fee for services provided. And, but you can't make money on your beach. You can only reimburse for those expenses. So we, we did some math, and we looked at the number of cars that we had on the beach. We ratioed that to how many cars came in and out of the day versus what we counted and what we assumed high, high time, high volume was. We then looked at our expenses associated with the beach, what it costs to pick up trash, what it costs to keep the beach open, what it costs to occasionally drag out the ruts that our drainage creates. Uh, storm debris removal, as well as, you know, I mentioned trash, and then our, our security on the beach. So when you run all those numbers, it does come out to, um, we would be justified in charging a fifteen dollar day pass and a fifty dollar annual pass. So, it is, it, those discussions have taken place, some comments have gone back and forth. And at this point, we would, we would like discussion on, is this something council feels is worth, you know, continuing to discuss and pursue? Um, we'd have, you know, timeline where if, if citizen input and citizen engagement indicates that this is something that we want to progress, then the plan would be to put timelines together that would have it ready to implement by next summer. The, the timing is such that there's a, you have to, we have to pass an ordinance, we have to amend a beach access plan. That has to go for GLO preamble and approval, and, and then it has to go for public comment. And then those public comments have to be addressed, and then we're authorized to implement it. So, um, at this point, really just looking for council direction and opinion on, is this something that we would like to, to continue? Um, and move forward. So at this point, I'm opening it up for discussion.
I definitely think we should continue this discussion.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know Gil's put a lot of work into the plan, and I think plan put work into it, to go to the plan. Uh, I know some people don't like the idea of paying to go to the beach, but if you live here and you buy the season pass for fifty dollars, that's four dollars and sixteen cents a month to go to the beach, and I think that could be just, that's less than a cup of coffee.
That's fair. Um.
Well, I mean, really, go, go ahead, finish what you were gonna say, cause I.
No, no, I was gonna come back.
If, if we have a basic consensus, if, if, what we, what I would, what we would like to do is actually distribute the plan to your biggest league to council. So that you can look at it, understand it, and comment. It's not a done deal. This is one of the problems we have. That's not it, okay? We're, this is, what we've done is get basically, we follow their guidance on how to proceed. Um, and it's informal comment, and we're going back and forth. We are, we are at a point where we could share.
Yes.
And that's what we would do the next.
Yeah, we're, we're still in, we have some additional things to tweak based on some additional very informal comments from GLO. Um, we need to polish up the numbers a little bit more.
And the appearance, and we should.
And then, then the, the plan would be at next council meeting, we will have, I, I wouldn't even call it a draft official plan yet. It would just be a.
A review.
Yes.
A work in progress.
A work, a review.
That's what it always is.
A, a review of a, of a, of a plan.
A plan, yeah.
Uh, and it, at that time also, we'd like to present a timeline for how we, and a plan for optimum way to engage citizenry. And, and of course, we love everybody's comments on, you know, do we do a survey? Do we, do we do some workshops? What, what is council's opinion on, on how we best engage people to, to get a plan that satisfies?
Yes, as best we can, sure.
Yeah, we can.
We should try to be as transparent as we can.
Exactly.
And make sure that everybody understands, communication's gonna be very keen in this regard.
Yes.
To this plan, because it is our whole community.
Yes.
And that's something that's very important for a community to be involved in this particular situation with.
Yes.
The beach.
Well, we've gotten very good comments back, and within the timeline, there's adequate time for us to do the very things you want in there. But, but what I think, Kendall, you proposed it, like a soft start in January of next year, and an actual, um, you know, start using the Plan One in March. So we have plenty of time.
Back to for spring break?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that would be the ideal target. Um, it's hard to predict just how long the, the, uh, GLO is allowed certain timelines for commenting.
Beach nourishment, it may affect this as well.
Yes, um, so, but, but that would be the, that would be the target, Melissa, is if, ideally, we, we have it up and running by spring break. But, but, but a.
No promises.
But a hard target by next summer.
No promises.
Okay, so we will, we will bring forward the, a working proposal for the next council meeting.
For review.
Yeah, for review. Yeah, just.
And we'll make it a little further.
Kendall, did you have any comments I see?
I'm just making little notes.
Yeah.
My trouble is not to share much more.
Okay, well, that, that concludes our new business. And, uh, on to the mayor's report. Um, first of all, I'll, um, talk to some minute about the beach replenishments. Um, almost all of the monies is coming from, uh, the state and.
Federal government.
Federal government and the state. So, and that number keeps increasing, but our portion has not increased. So our portion of the beach nourishment, Robert helped me, a hundred and forty thousand.
Correct.
And, um, it's anticipated that a hundred and forty thousand will, will be in next year's budget. If we look at the timeline proposed schedule, that payment would be due sometime end of this year or beginning next year. So the, the million dollar expenditures are on the state and federal, and, and our cost share is, is relatively small compared to the whole cost.
Now, is this, is this, can I, oh, I can't ask questions on your mayor's report. Sorry, go ahead.
Anyway, that, answering that. Okay, so, uh, first of all, in my mayor's report, first and foremost, I would like to give a wholehearted welcome to the newly elected alterpersons. Um, also, for the benefit of these new alterpersons, I would like to clarify some concerns, um, that have been raised. So they can be, so, so you guys can be assured of our practices moving forward. So during the budget cycle last year, due to personnel privacy rights, positions and salaries for staff positions were discussed in executive session. Um, a spreadsheet was provided to council, which specified positions, pay ranges for those positions, and an estimated allocation of their time to the various budget codes. Uh, and then these salaries were incorporated into the budget which was approved. Um, and, and also as part of those salaries, a note that part-time positions do not get health insurance or pay vacations, sick leave, or holidays. So the part-time position we had was staffed based on total hours per year, not per week. At the time we hired a part-time person, we were anticipating moving to, uh, the Texas Municipal League Retirement System. They have a criteria that if you work under a thousand hours per year, uh, you're not in the system. Our, our current system is five hundred hours a year, but TML was one thousand. And so that's the basis that part-time employees were hired, is that a thousand hours per year. It didn't, and that was the criteria. So in some instances, a part-time employee might work thirty hours, and the next week that employee might work only five. But at the end of the year, it's less than a thousand hours per year, that was the agreement. So, and the number of hours worked per week would vary based on city needs and deliverables. And also, for your guys' knowledge, our full-time city support staff, with their benefits, health and time off, um, they result in a cost to the city of between thirty-two and forty-three dollars an hour. Uh, our part-time employee who does not get benefits is paid thirty dollars an hour. Uh, the other thing is regarding our meeting agendas, we are working, Kendall and I have been in discussion, to improve our agenda wording, to ensure that it is clear when an item is for discussion and when an item is scheduled for a vote. We realize there's been some confusion in the past over this. So, you know, please note that the agenda will specify take action for when a motion will be made. And, um, that motion can be to vote on the item or table it until more information is available and additional discussion can occur. So, uh, now some additional updates. Kendall already pointed some of this out. Uh, we are migrating our server-based data to a cloud-based SharePoint site end of next week. Council authorized an IT security upgrade program last year, and, uh, and we've been working on that. So, that's a big next step in getting that, that migrated. Our phone systems were migrated already, now they're voice over internet. So if we have to evacuate, or if for some reason an employee needs to work at home, they, they have access to their city phone on their laptop. So it allows more remote functionality, and if we have to evacuate, we'll be able to do that. Our court system has been installed, and it'll be fully implemented to the cloud in the next few weeks. Um, the water accounting system is ready to migrate, um, it's just waiting on final scheduling. There was a lot of pre-work that had to be done on that, because there, there were, over the years of using this accounting system, there were a lot of one-off systems that we weren't using anymore, but they were still there. So, uh, Tina and Esther had to spend some time figuring out which of those needed to be worked into the migration or not. Um, then, also, we talked about the new accounting system that'll be ready to go with the new budget year. So, uh, and that new system will allow more efficient fund accounting and help closed efficiencies. So, um, all, all of that will be ready to, to, to move and go. We're still gonna have a, probably a few challenges. Esther's gonna have a few extra challenges this summer as she, um, if we have to evacuate. if we have to evacuate, because QuickBooks is still on her hard drive. So, uh, and, and she's gonna have to diligently back up because that, that won't automatically be taking place anymore if we have to migrate. So, uh, as we have transitioned new staff, we did identify quite a few shortcomings in our, uh, short-term rental administration. Staff is working diligently on identifying software platforms that will provide the desired efficiency, but still be cost-effective. Um, we talked about this already, they're also working on getting all the rental home information in this spreadsheet that then can be uploaded to the software platform, as well as provide critical information to our residents, as well as our police force. Right now, we still can't get the police force that, that list of rentals with contact information, with their twenty-four-hour contact information. Um, staff tells me that their target for having that information uploaded is July first. And then, uh, on to infrastructure for a minute, at the next council meeting, I will be bringing some high-level options for discussion to address our aging infrastructure and ways that we can achieve our desired reliability. So once again, at next meeting, we'll be asking for council direction and input on which of those options do we wanna pursue? And, you know, do we wanna table some and just move forward with these, or which direction do we wanna go? Um, you know, also, be assured that our city administrator is continually reviewing the skills and staffing uh, required to manage our day-to-day activities, support our infrastructure maintenance, and drive improvements to enhance the quality of life in our city. Um, I think having that org chart, uh, and I like the idea for, for council, having salary ranges attached is a great idea. Finally, I encourage all Jamaica Beach employees, all the many, many volunteers that help the city, uh, and our citizens to bring up their insights and viewpoints for us all to prosper from. So, once again, please feel free to reach out to me with concerns, ideas, suggestions. My phone number is on the website, and I encourage any of you to contact me anytime if you have any questions and concern. So, once again, thanks to all of you who ran, for those that are on their second term and still plugging along. And I'm looking forward to setting goals, finding collaborative solutions, and enhancing our unique slice of paradise. So, thank you very much.
Hey.
All right. I don't think we have a need for executive session. So, yes, we do need your signatures before you depart. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Not a second, not a second. All in favor?